Welcome to the City of Marshalltown, City Hall Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. Today's date is December 10, 2018, and the time is 5:30 PM. We are in the council chambers. Notice the public, the mayor and city council, welcome. Comment from the public during discussion of any agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall clearly, shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any specific consoler. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, please rise if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Very good. Does anyone have any comments from the mayor or council or administrator?
Your honor, I do have one. This afternoon, I got to play Santa for a former citizen who wanted to donate some money to a family who had been affected by the tornado. And I had a good match for a family that was in need, had lost most everything in the tornado and had relocated within town and just had some other issues going on in their lives. And it is a blessing that people, not only from Marshalltown, are being very generous this season, but people who have connections to Marshalltown, who are from other areas of the country, that they have come forward and are sharing with those who need it at this time. So I just want to encourage anyone who has that feeling, that I love playing Santa. That was very, very nice. And, but we do have people who could use help. If you've got an inkling, then we certainly can match you up with them, someone who needs help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your honor, I'd like to pay tribute to city staff members. And I'm hearing many stories post-tornado of the extraordinary efforts that were taken, the time spent, and the coordination and flexibility. I'm sure this also went on with the county. Many of our employees went beyond the call and were such dedicated to the recovery that we've made such really good progress. So I, I again offer my thanks to city employees.
Thank you. Anyone else? I couldn't agree more. And if you ever become the mayor, you'll learn you get a lot of calls, a lot of stops on the street, in the grocery store. And the comments about the city staff have been uniformly affirmative. Okay. Well, is there, let's go on to item F, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
I move for approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. Madam clerk, will you read the items on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, your honor. Approve the council minutes from November 26 and November 28, goal-setting mission. Approve bill list in the amount of $2,307,532.60 received at the building report for November. Appoint to the library board, Tanya Gaffney. Reappoint Megan Bell, Judith Lindholm, Maureen Lyons, Ronnie Manus, Alan Thorson, Robert Untiet. Approve August and September financial statements. Resolution to certify unpaid bills for collection with taxes. Resolution approving purchasing policy and procedure manual. Resolution approving a purchase agreement with Starry Equipment for a new SIM line Dura-Patcher. Resolution approving the Marshalltown Municipal Airport five-year capital improvement program and federal funding application. Two new tree trimmers, Finco Tree and Woods Service and Cody's Tree Service.
Very good. Thank you. Onto item G, reports. The first one is Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Val Ralph, Director of the Marshalltown Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'm here to give an update. So I just wanted to kind of bring you up to date. The last time I was here is August 27. Our community is a little different situation at that point in time, as it is still now. But we had taken, one of the things I just wanted to share is some of the things we've done with the hoteliers and the community as far as outreach since the storm. We went out and took a lot of information to them for folks that were displaced and put in, in the hotels and stuff for quite some time. And so at that particular time in August, we had taken them information on how to get ahold of any kind of assistance that they might need. So after that, I've just kind of been in contact with them on a regular basis. One of the things Sean and I did to make sure that we were thanking them for taking in and stepping up and doing those duties on and above and the services that they provided is, the day before Thanksgiving, we took fruit baskets out to 10 of the hoteliers. And that was very well received. And just thank them for, you know, on behalf of our community and also for taking care of people that have been displaced from their homes. That particular day that we were there with the fruit baskets was the first day that there was going to be a family that was going to get, was going to leave the hotel to go home for Thanksgiving. So that kind of gives you an idea, they were there for quite some time. And there still might be others that are displaced. But we just wanted to thank them for that. It was very well received. I think they appreciated being thanked for that, so we did. This last Friday, took off, we got some new tear-off maps, and so I wanted to make sure they had those. So, just another touch base with them. So, a couple of things I wanted to share, promotions that we're doing on behalf of Marshalltown on some different types of levels. So the first one is, on a national level, we are participating in this, it's called the Sports and Planners Guide. And there's an Iowa page in here. So it has all of the states from across the United States in here, and it's geared for sports planners. And so we kind of took advantage of the Iowa page. Even though we're not a part of the Iowa Sports Commission, which is like Des Moines and Dubuque and Cedar Falls and Cedar Rapids and some of the bigger communities, but we did take an ad out. So we actually have, we're kind of in the front, which is kind of exciting. I don't know, I thought it was kind of a big deal. So we're in the very front page, meet in the middle, and it talks about all of our sporting events and sporting facilities that we have. And then the rest of them are kind of in the back. I mean, they talk about their facilities. But it's a, a good way for us to get kind of some national coverage and maybe some folks will take a look. We get a bunch of copies of these that we can share with sports planners that might be looking for places to have sporting events. Then at the next level is our state level, is we, we provide visitors' guides to 25 welcome receptions, welcome centers, excuse me, welcome centers across the state. Four of those are state-owned, the rest of them are private, public partnerships. We have an ad in the Iowa Travel Guide that features Marshalltown that reaches over 3,500 travelers. And something kind of interesting, I thought you might find some fun stats, is in 2017 to 2018, travelers spent, on average, $251 on their trips to Iowa, which grew from 66.6% to 71.6%. Women accounted for 65% of the travel planners. And three-fourths of the folks that did travel to the state of Iowa did it for leisure. And travel parties stayed on, on average, a 3.4 days. And nearly 50% stayed in a hotel motel while they're in the state of Iowa. So those are kind of some fun statistics that they share with us from the State Tourism Office. The other thing we do on a state level is, we'll be having an ad in Vacation Iowa that comes out in the May issue, and that reaches over 101,000 readers around the state. We're a member of the Iowa Group Travel Association, which is bus tours, soliciting folks outside of the state of Iowa to come and have a bus come to Iowa for tours. We were a part of a FAM, which is a familiarization tour last year, last fall, and one of those groups from Texas will be coming back and staying here in, in Marshalltown with us. And at a regional level, we have the Central Iowa Tourism Region, which we're a part of that Travel Guide, and it features all of Marshalltown, all of Marshall County, and the Marshall County parks and city parks as well. And then kind of at a state level, our website stats to the visit page since August, since I was here, was over 5,000. We have a new tear-off map that really focuses on the hotels and the sporting facilities because right now, youth sporting events is real popular, people are traveling into Marshalltown. So we want them to be able to get to where they're going, should they choose not to use their phone to get around. And we are in the process, the CVB Board voted to begin and develop a new visitors' guide that will have some cutting-edge technology, there will be a Go Guide and an iMap. Folks can get on the iMap, they can pull in different attractions or trails or whatever they want to see, and then they can email that to a friend and say, hey, meet me in Marshalltown. These are the things I'm going to be doing in the next two or three days while I'm here. So we're excited about that. Some strategic partnerships locally, I wanted to share some information with you about some data that I was able to collect regarding the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Association State Swim and Dive Championships that were held November 2nd and 3rd. So this year was the first format for a two-day format. They had 430 athletes, 40 teams, 85 coaches and managers, and a total attendance of 2,117, which is up from, up 600 from, from last year's swim championships. And so if you put in the calculations for the economic impact data on that, that was about $775,000 for that particular event, the economic impact of that on our community. So, pretty good, interesting numbers. That amounts to about $142 per day, per person, that overnighted here. And I know we did have some teams that didn't overnight because we didn't have some rooms due to the hotel situation, but still, $775,000 is a pretty good economic impact for a sporting event. The CVB was instrumental in providing financial support to the Y for a purchase of a vital piece of equipment known as, I'll make sure I get it right, the new multi-colored video display board that they needed to upgrade. They need to upgrade that for the swim championships. So we were able to provide some funding to help purchase that. We did receive a nice follow-up thank you letter from the Iowa Coaches Association after the swim meet, just thanking us for our hospitality and the coaches' meeting room. And kind of another fun figure that I wanted to share with you, many of you know Tim Keener, kind of heads up that Marshalltown Little League Baseball. And I had a conversation with Tim about these calculations and how we calculate these, this economic impact figure. And he said, according to kind of his grant, they bring in about 21,000 athletes and coaches and visitors from the middle of March to the middle of June. And so that was 14 weekends this year. And he figured through that calculator that they spent about $250,000 per weekend times 14 weekends, so $3.5 million over 14 weeks was spent in Marshalltown due to the Marshalltown Little League and all the work that they do. So, Tim Keener works really hard with his coaches, his volunteers, and then also with the Marshalltown baseball team, mentoring those kids. And so, that's a pretty good economic impact on our community. Working with the Marshalltown Softball Association to bid on the men's 16-inch major national championship tournament. That's the big Labor Day weekend tournament that brings in a lot of teams out of Chicago. So they're bidding on that, working with Eric Wilson. And then, of course, working with Iowa Valley to bring in boys and girls' youth basketball to the Marshalltown Community College, working with Brenner on that. And just some other things, Iowa Adventures Challenge Course. So if anybody's looking for a corporate retreat, we got a really nice challenge course. So, want to make sure we take advantage of that and share that with some folks. And working with Vision Marshalltown on the social offerings to create awareness of social offerings that are going on here in the community and really driving folks to the community calendar and really encouraging them to think local and stay local for nightlife and fun things, and invite friends and family to come in and just stay local and think local. And then last piece here I want to share is, we have a communication, we did a, signed up for constant contact. And it's our way of letting and communicating with the hotels and the restaurants and attractions and retail businesses about the number of visitors coming to Marshalltown, so they can either staff up accordingly or put welcomes on their electronic signs, just to kind of continue to communicate with them what's going on in Marshalltown from the visitor's standpoint. And that's what I have for a report. Is there anything I can answer for you?
Any questions, comments? You have to hand it to the Riddens and Blooms to spearhead that fundraiser, to have all the seating at the, at the Y for the pool.
Yeah, yeah, because that's, that's the, what most folks like about our facility here in Marshalltown is the fan experience. And the athlete, you know, the athlete themselves are experienced because the fans are down close to the pool, and they don't get that everywhere. And so that's what really is a big, big advantage for the Marshalltown facility. And of course, the great volunteers and leadership they have at the Y.
Well, thanks for the report. I think Tim Keener was also the Citizen of the Year with the Optimist this year.
Yes, he was.
Thank you. Okay. Onto item H, which is resolutions. Would you read the first one, please, Madam Clerk?
Resolution approving an economic development grant to David and Kathleen Thompson for demolition.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second, your honor.
Very good. Discussion?
I see that the Thompsons are here. I didn't know if they would want to say anything, but this is something similar to an item that we did about a year, a little more than a year ago, with Avita Properties and the demolition of the funeral home. We did a 20% cost of demolition grant from our downtown TIF funds to basically take down the property. Thompsons have submitted their quote to me, and so the resolution is for 20% of their cost as well.
I'd like to comment how exciting it is to see a major building going up downtown. We haven't seen one of those in a while, and it's, it's just interesting and fun to drive by. Any questions? Public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Maybe you could explain a little bit more about how this TIF is being applied, does, because, does that mean that all the buildings that are getting demolished downtown can get TIF money for being demolished? And I thought I heard in a meeting some time back, I thought I heard Jessica say that the Avita money got moved from TIF to local option sales tax. I can't find that in the records anywhere, but I thought I recalled that. But I'm just mentioning it to clear, clear my mind. But I'm wondering if other properties get the same access to TIF money.
So, the, the building that we're talking about was not damaged by the tornado, it was one that was damaged prior. And this was something that started in a conversation about an incentive that we did have available prior to the tornado. And so, at this point, this is not being considered for tornado-damaged properties, as that's a whole different level of what we're dealing with and insurance involvement. However, that is something that could come back to all of you for further consideration if that is something that you would like to consider. And what Mr. Eaton just referenced about local option sales tax being used, it was originally applied to the, the Avita properties, originally came out of local option sales tax. It was to come out of the downtown TIF fund, and so that transaction was moved in last fiscal year. So that was not local option sales tax that was utilized for the payment to Avita Properties.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Roll call, please.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Thank you. Would you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2020 international dump truck for the street department from O'Halloran International for the price of $141,860.
Move to approve. Second.
Comment?
No. Jeff Rhodes, Street Superintendent, I was just going to see if anybody had any questions about it.
Any questions?
Is this, is this going to affect, we had our police cars and, and other city vehicles damaged, and we had to do something with the capital improvement? Is this going to hinder that?
No, this will be coming out of the road use tax fund and not our Fund 030, which is the capital improvement tax dollars where basically the, most of the, our city vehicles that are general fund purposes come out of.
Any other questions or?
Public comment?
Do you want me to read through this?
No. Wave the reading.
Okay.
Let's do the roll call instead.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Very good. Carried. Onto item I, which is discussion items. And the first one is the police and fire building update.
Do you want me to pull up the spreadsheet?
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So here's an update for the police and fire building. We bonded $17.5 million, and we had some left over from the FY14 bond as well. So our total debt issuance being applied to this project is 17.9. To date, we've earned $250,000 in interest. So our total revenues is $18,154,000. So if you look at all the expenditures, if you take the total payments plus the encumbrances, that's what the contracts are for all the vendors. I'm going to cruise down through here. So down in the purple, many meetings ago, you approved that this stormwater improvement should be paid out of the stormwater bond fund of 2016. So we did remove that cost. Another significant change from the last report that was sent out is the traffic signal improvements. It's now $95,000. We originally had estimated $247,000, so that is much lower. And then here on the median, the median for Anson, we took that to zero. It was estimated at $371,000. It's no longer needed. We did decrease the dispatch equipment by a little bit. And then, then the yellow, we had budgeted $750,000. This amount has been paid to date, and then we've encumbered $384,000, so there's still a little bit left. So, to date, we still have $1.3 million remaining, well, well within the budget. Any questions? Thank you.
Let's go on to item two, which is the strategic planning update.
Yes. So this, I just wanted to bring back the, the mission statement and the value statements that we had discussed on November 28th, and just sort of as a first kind of public viewing as well, and just see if this still feels kind of like where we were at on the 28th, if it still is, is where things should be, or if we should go back and continue to wordsmith. And so, as you'll recall, the, the mission statement that we worked on is, "The City of Marshalltown collaborates to provide a welcoming, safe, vibrant, and growing community." And so I didn't know if there was any feedback on that at this point, or if this is something that we should move forward with.
Any comments, questions? I like the idea of putting it on our letterhead.
Oh, it will go in more places than that, so, yeah. And then, the, the other thing that we worked on during that session as well was our value statements, which I'll, I'll just sort of read, not the tagline, but what we talked about, inclusiveness, innovation, stewardship, trust, and excellence. And just looking for any additional comment on those, and whether or not those still kind of look like what we were talking about on the 28th, and if, if we're comfortable moving forward with those, given that we've had a few weeks to digest.
Any feedback? I thought it was a good planning session this year.
It, it was. And so this, of course, you know, was a, a large portion of our time. The next portion is really what comes under each of those goals, and so that will be something, hopefully we'll have as brief of an update as possible on the 26th, given that that is a special meeting at noon, but possibly more conversation on December 14th, depending on how that agenda looks as well. So, but I will be communicating with you via email as we kind of go, but hopefully December 26th will just be sort of a hit the highlight type of thing, and then we can have adoption of it on January 14th, if everybody's comfortable.
I apologize in advance for being out of the country on that day. So, with any luck, best, and you'll be able to handle the meeting.
Which day is that? January 14th?
The December 26 date.
At noon. Oh, yeah. I'm here, but, yeah.
Okay. I, I could call in, but it'd be kind of expensive from France. All right. Any other comments about the strategic planning? Let's go on to discussion of, on the, discussion on change of city business hours.
This is also related to the strategic planning conversation, as we had some conversation about city hours and operations and things. And one of the things that, you know, happens here at City Hall in the Carnegie Building is that our hours tend to be a little bit different than other city buildings, as well as internally, we have different hours with Parks and Recs, Parks and Rec being from 8:30 to 4:30, and the rest of the facility being open from 8:30 to 5:00. And so, one of the things, the county offices close at 4:30. We find that foot traffic and phone traffic does tend to be the lightest from that 4:30 to 5:00 period. And so, at this point, I would recommend that we, we do change the hours of City Hall and the Carnegie Building to 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Fri- Friday, starting on January 1st of 2019. We do not see that this will result in a significant change with employees, as they could choose to reduce their lunch hour to a half hour unpaid, instead of a one-hour unpaid lunch, or work with their supervisor to keep the one-hour paid lunch and still remain in the building until 5 o'clock. And so it'd be a department-by-department basis as to how that would be handled.
Any reaction or questions?
Come at it, give me your impression again. You're going to, you're going to have the building closed, but the employees are going to be working from 8 to 5, then?
Some could choose that, if that's what they work out with their department head. That's currently, what we have right now is employees report at 8 and work until 5. But this, this would give some flexibility that that, they could keep that same schedule, or the building, you know, the building would close at 4:30, and if there was, if, if it worked within the department, that they did not need to stay until 5, or they did not want to keep that hour, one-hour unpaid lunch, that that's when they could make that change with their department head.
Well, if you take an hour off of the day, how does a half hour work into that? That doesn't make, that doesn't work right.
Employees currently work from 8 to 5 with a one-hour unpaid lunch for eight hours.
Right.
And so, this would still be employees working from either 8 to 5 with a one-hour unpaid lunch, or 8 to 4:30 with a 30-minute unpaid lunch.
Okay. What are, what are the, the, the people that want to sign up for the recreation period? I see them come in here and they can't get in now, but being closed at 4:30, I don't know why that ever happened. We, we're, we're serving the public, and I think we got to be open so the public can get in. And the more, the longer we're closed, the less we can offer to the public. I, I guess I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not in favor of shortening office hours. I'm in favor of having the office open so we can serve the customers who are the people that are paying our salary.
And, and I would say that one of the things that we have done a significant amount of work on in the last year is moving more things online, in terms of being able to pay a parking ticket online, being able to pay different things online. Civic Rec, I think, is not quite live yet, but it's going to be live soon. And so it gives people to do more online. I do understand and recognize that there is a portion of our community who has no access to computers and is not able to do that. But we really have tried to do as much as we can to get people to use our online resources, to not show up in the office and utilize staff time, you know, in that immediate customer service way, but to provide for an online interaction. But I completely understand your point. That's our concern too, as well, you know, that if you make this change, there's certainly going to be some people who would normally visit between 4:30 and 5:00 that would not be able to seek services.
Yep.
Would you, would you still be, from 8 to 8:30, would the doors still be locked? You couldn't get in?
Correct.
For the department staff?
Yeah, that's a time period now that most departments are using for their weekly staff meetings, and then we've started to incorporate more sort of building-wide tra- meetings and then we've started to incorporate more sort of building-wide trainings during that half hour, first half hour of the day as well. And so it is an important time of the day to just give us the ability to do some of those training things and for departments to come together and, and meet.
As Councilman Lamer mentioned, have we had increased issues with people not being able to get keys to facilities or to get into facilities, like through the, to come to the parks and rec? But how long have they been closed at 8, at, excuse me, 4:30?
I think it was before I started here, so four years? Yeah, so.
So that's not, so whatever's happened, they've fairly well adjusted or they?
No, they're not.
They're not? What issues are we having with that?
My grandson worked there a year ago as an intern and spent many hours after the 4:30 signing people up, giving keys to the building because they were supposed to be closed, but the people were knocking on the door and wanting to get in. So I think just that's, that's how I have, have had that experience because he worked there. And he told me that was a problem. So that's, that's what I know.
And, and that's where we're looking at, one way to solve that problem is, because it is true that individuals who are looking for park and rec services come into the building and are disappointed when, you know, nobody is able to provide those services. But that's where we think that model of closing at 4:30 is the more consistent model to be with rather than forcing that department to stay open until 5. If the entire building is shut down at 4:30, then the problems that Councilmember Lamer mentions won't be issues because they won't be able to get into the building.
Is the procedure now, if someone has rented the facility for an evening, they have to arrive before 4:30 to get the key? I mean, is that typically?
They have to make arrangements for pickup?
For any of the facilities in the parks?
It's usually, the key is usually available like at 10 o'clock in the morning at the earliest or something like that. That's what our experience has been in renting the community building.
But people don't have the same hours you've had. Most of the people work 8 to 5.
Right.
And then they get off work. They, they can't just leave in the middle of the day and go up there.
Well, I think they make other arrangements. I can't imagine that four years in that we don't have people adjusting their schedules or asking for help from others that are involved to try to pick up the key. I mean, they're, 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 would you suggest we have 24/7 service for recreation?
Yes, I would. Yes, I would. That's what, if you look at other cities right now, other cities are lengthening out their time of service when they're available to the public. They're not cutting them, they're lengthening them.
Well, I think we'd need to add staff to do that.
Anyway, that's just me.
Any other comments or questions? Public comment?
Maybe there will be, I don't know if this key thing is really an issue or if it just was when your grandson was working there, but if it's really an issue, then there may be some other solution for a drop-off pickup type situation with a code or something where people can get them after hours. Because I can understand that if they have to work till 5 or 5:30, but people do have all kinds of work hours, so I just don't know how you take care of everybody unless you have a little bit of technology on your side or more staff.
Any other comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. There's a hotel that I stay at in, oh, Arkansas, and it doesn't really matter, but they have a lockbox, so they, they don't have staff after 6 or 7 o'clock at night. And so I know when I make my reservation and I'm going to show up at 10 o'clock, I just put in the combination and get my key out and I got to check in the next day. Just mentioning the lockbox might be a good idea.
Thank you. Last chance to come in on this one. Going once, twice, on to the next one.
Well, I think if this is something that would like to move forward, we would want to have a resolution on the December 26th meeting to formalize the hours change. If it's not something that want, you want to move forward with at this time, if there would be a different time, you'd like us to bring it back. But if, if this would be something that you would be agreeable to, we would like to see it start January 1st.
That'll give us time to check with other cities our size to see what they're doing.
I, I move that we add it to the 26th, the December 26th agenda. It doesn't lock us in at all, but it'll be on the agenda then.
I would follow up with that as well.
I'll take that as a second.
As a second.
Any other discussion?
Only, only to say that our staff, because they have experienced the tornado, and even before that, I would say, they work extremely long hours and saying that we're open from 8:30 to 4:30, that's just the time that they're accessible to the public. There's plenty of work going on behind the scenes and I, I think this could give them just a little bit of relief and flexibility because I, I just, it is really hard to keep great people. And there are lots of great opportunities in other communities for our excellent staff. So I'd like to, I think this could be one small way that we can say, hey, we hear you and if this helps, then let's do it.
I'm still pretty proud of the fact that we went from having meetings every single Monday to twice a month and we seem to be doing okay with that, so.
Yeah, that was a great change.
Not a unanimous one.
Just pat yourself on the back.
That would not be unanimous, but that's fine.
Okay, well, let's do the roll call on that one.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That's the closest vote we've had in years. Thank you. We are now at the public comment part of the evening and so I have to repeat this again. We ought to just get a poster and I can say, go read the poster. But it's this, members of the public may make comments on any item that was not in the agenda during this time. The speaker again approaches the mic, states his or her name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes unless longer comment is authorized by me. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and public as a whole and the mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public and no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings law. There has to be a way to shorten this admonition, but there it is. Is anyone interested in publicly commenting? At this time, we need to go into closed sessions, so we will declare that the public council meeting was closed.
Well, it's not adjourned yet.
Yeah, we're not adjourned, but I guess I'm.
There's a motion to go into closed session.
Okay.
Should I read it?